We will be starting at six o'clock PM. Time now is about an hour PM. I'm going to ask everyone please silence your devices or turn them off if something will have any major interference as we conduct our business. But a lot of speakers, when you are speaking, to please speak into the mic for recording purposes. If you are a speaker, whether that be in public or one of the council members or another speaker, please speak in the microphone so that we can hear better. Thank you so much. Time is now six o'clock PM and this meeting of the Selma City Council is here about a call to order. This is our work session. I would like to ask Councilwoman Lisa James, please offer our dedication for you.
There was our history. Father God, we come before you just saying thank you, God. God, we thank you for the seat of Selma. We thank you for all the citizens. God, we just want to give you glory. God, please, we asking that you intervene in our meeting. God, let there be a meeting that will help the city. And God, and when everyone speak, we'll be speaking of the benefits of the city. Father God, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for every perfect gift that you have given us today, God. God, we want to continue to pray for those in stress, those in need, Father. But God, we're going to give you all the glory because you are God and you are God alone. We thank you, Jesus, amen.
Amen, thank you. Let us all stand for please believers. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you very much, made to see you. Now we'll go on to the next item in our agenda, which is the roll call. Council members, please answer accordingly. Councilwoman President Young, President, Councilwoman Troy Harville, Councilwoman Kristi Thomas, Councilwoman Carmichael, Councilwoman Lisa James, Councilwoman Sandra Randolph, alright, Councilman Adam Jensen, Councilwoman Jane Thomas, and Councilman Michael Johnson. Thank you, Council, for responding to roll call. Now we'll go next to our citizens' requests for the evening. Please remember, citizens, that you only have five minutes. At the five-minute mark, I will say time. Nothing personal, but we have a very lengthy agenda tonight and we must get through it. So please remember, only five minutes. Two of our speakers are not going to be with us tonight. That's Reverend Goins, he will not be with us tonight, also is Alicia Alvarado. So we'll start first with Ms. Courtney McQuire. Is she here to discuss auto repair shop? Uh, Mr. Courtney McQuire, very sorry.
How you doing?
Hey, good evening.
Uh, yes, I would just come to-
You may want to get a microphone, yes sir.
I was just coming to the city council to ask for a request that I can have my shop at my house. I need a license.
Okay, I believe the best procedure for you to follow is probably to have a discussion with our tax and license director. Uh, that's Mr. Aaron Roper. And so I think if you come down to City Hall and make an appointment or come out and see him one day, he can help you follow the procedure.
He had had many, so then I had to come, for the council, it's up to the councilmen.
Have you submitted a formal application? I haven't seen it.
He didn't, he didn't give me, he just wrote up a paper for me to present to y'all. So I'm going to come to the city council meeting and present it to y'all, what I was trying to do.
Okay, well, I haven't seen anything, a package from Mr. Roper, anything regarding yours. Go ahead, Councilman Carmichael.
Does it do to zoning issues or? Is it due to zoning issues?
What do you mean?
Are you zoned for the business of your property or in your house?
No, not that I know of. Well, I stay right downtown. And I actually been working on cars anyway, but I had to have a license to continue.
What's the name of your business?
Courtney McQuire, McQuire Auto.
Okay, well, what we'll do is we'll have a discussion with our attorney and see what the next steps are to him. He may, or we may give you a call.
If, if I may, President Young, I'd like to- I'd like to see if I can get a time agreed, if he can stop by tomorrow to go over the details of what he's trying to do and then route it to the appropriate department heads.
Who do I see?
See me.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to see that office right there. I don't know, that's me.
Okay.
I just need a time, maybe give back tomorrow.
I could be here in the morning, anytime, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, fine.
Okay. And what's your address?
Two two up front in the street, three mile back, yeah.
Okay. We hope to be able to offer you some assistance and after we have that discussion with the attorney, we'll proceed.
I thank y'all, appreciate you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. McQuire. You too. Oh, so I didn't see y'all's names up there. Uh, Councilman Carmichael, and Councilwoman Thomas.
It has to be where it's known, known in that area, where it's in, like the resident area. He said we have, our business, when you met the topic, we didn't have a client. So when we have, um, you have a warrant, that gives you, then we have a lawyer.
We'll have our attorney to look at it thoroughly so we'll make the, make the decision. Go ahead, Councilman Carmichael.
And that's all, and I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Blackman. Counselors, are there any comments or questions regarding Mr. David Blackman? Counselor on the other side.
To this, uh, this day by, I would like to address, uh, Mr. David, uh, who we did vote on. Also, during this weekend, uh, last week when we were in, uh, in our training, we have opportunity to address issues that are right on the cards that we need to find out in legal. Who dismissed contract? This was addressed during our training at the Alabama Intoxication. And that question I put on him, it became my answer. They told us that Mr. David contracted this by the council that was in there. If anything that was in that contract, the fact of any area of saying against him that was role up in the, in that contract, that the council has the right to dismiss that contract, not the mayor, because we were the ones that did the contract. And also, we took the notes and also we video the whole session because it was very important to get, uh, to work, to get the right answer to what we needed. The contract that we had found, this by the council voting, and we did not dismiss his contract. And they told us to look at the contract, anything in that contract that was against, uh, where the role of in that contract to say for this by the council to dismiss it, then we have to write. But not, not the mayor did not have to write. And the president was present at that time. And he, he verified the same thing. And we, it was addressed by a real attorney. We had, we had two from the league and we had an attorney that sit there against me. There were a lot of questions that were raised from different council rooms, different city, on the situation they would have. And this was one of our situations that we needed to take care of.
Any other council members having any comments or questions? Uh, Mr. Blackman, in regards to any action tonight, this is a work session. So we can't take any votes, uh, directly, but we can take votes on Tuesday officially. All right? Any other questions? Here is another thank you, counsel, thank you citizens, uh, for going through our citizens request. At this time, are there any announcements that need to be made? Are there any announcements, uh, that need to be shared with the public? Very good. So now we'll move on to our mayor's report, uh, and then our town's report. And I will start with your first.
Good evening, citizens. That's, you have several firefighters here, uh, the items on the agenda, specifically to fire departments, I have six taken out of order so that they can get that to the the town's chief, uh, chief, you know, forward, uh, to speak from his issue. That's important. Okay, it comes out this way. You have a chief who's on duty, he's on call, so as he may succeed in his work.
Good evening, council. Really, ladies and gentlemen, and all these, so, uh, so, and then, what we have for us, um, what we have for tonight is a plan. Mayor has requested, uh, imposed upon us to come up with our own plan for the fire department. Now, several tribes over the last few months, with nothing being rendered, we sit down as body of the fire department and came up with some plans to move us forward as a unit. This plan was, plan E is now wanting to, uh, just explain it to you instead of trying to read the whole thing and shorten your night session. First one is, our recommendation is that we have two tenants go ahead and promote permanently. Then we have two tenants that have to take tests. Uh, their provisions promoted right now, they would stay the same. We have two sergeants that will be moved into an appropriate pay grade because they are serving in backup roles or tenants periodically. We also have firefighters that have been stepping up and serving in backup jobs as a sergeant. Um, what we're doing is, we're going to allow them to take the test. Also, all, all the department that has two years, then we'll, we'll give them a year to complete their school that they're needing to get, but to see themselves and sponsor. Um, or sponsor any class that's needed. And after that year, they won't fail, so they can get all their classes and of course they'll go around to be to the next test. Then we have, uh, five, those same firefighters are stepping up, they want to adjust their pay for doing a job that is beyond their scope and that's backup driving. And also just to give us some buffer room, because right now they're getting paid the same thing as the person that walks in the door, we think that's totally unfair. We all sit down and this is a plan that everyone agreed to and think that it can be achieved in a short period of time, we can go ahead and move forward. There will be a pay differential, um, between the sergeants, um, paid. And we've capitalized that to be both the sergeants paid from three thousand to three hundred, then three thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars, eight four cents, that's increased on firefighters, and that will be six firefighters, not a staff member. Six firefighters. And the annual advancement for them, and the annual amount for them will be six thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. We have total of ten thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty cents, which are talking on the same line item, and that's salaries. We're not, we're not feeling, we're not using all of our money because we have all the slots filled up, especially our regular slots. So we have enough money there to suffice for that. And this plan, we have, uh, all firefighters have signed, not all of them, some of them are empty. Uh, but the majority of the fire department has signed on that, or signed to endorse this letter. Uh, there were no arrests, no pressure. This is something that we all agree on. And like I said, this is a plan that came up and was achieved in a matter of days. So when you get people working together, which people think that the fire department is not, but we are, and that's why they're here today, to show that we are working as, as a unit. So this is a plan that we want to present to you for your approval. And we can move on to vision of other things in the fire department, by place, Mr. Blackman.
All right, I guess, but the, uh... Let's see if the council has a question.
Oh, oh, yes, question, Thomas.
So what about my, my, my question to you? Are you wanting this, you brought this to, as a plan of raise? So you were asking about this when we voted next budget, the next weekly of the budget?
What they're asking for is not going to change the salary line item in the existing budget. And that's because they don't understand. And so the salary line item will not increase in this fiscal year. Uh, and so there is no budget amendment, what we're looking at. And the reason it is coming for council is because there are some salary increases. And that's why it is something that will be changed.
Are any other questions at this time? Any other questions? Okay, mayor, oh, you, you just gave a game to us, and I understand the situation. So we'll take the opportunity to review it, uh, this weekend. And if there's some additional questions that come up between now and Tuesday, I'll send, if I have any additional questions, I'll send them to you.
Excellent. The, just also, the only other document that you have related to this is the pay scale that the council approved. All we're doing is moving those men who have the experience beyond step one in the pay classification. Uh, and I would like to just acknowledge that interim, uh, chief, that was interim assistant chief, uh, uh, David and, and all of the firefighting leadership developed this plan. I asked them for a plan, they worked together to pull this together. This will take a lot of pressure on all of them. And I am going to ask council on Tuesday for favorable vote on this issue again. Do you have any questions?
Okay. You mentioned there that proposed, uh, pay structure is already approved?
Uh, yes, the pay plan has already been approved by council.
Okay, so why do they, they're not already getting the pay?
Well, because the budget amounts that are in the budget was, was all placed in at step one. When the plan was implemented, everyone was placed at step one. And so what we're doing now is we keep the adjustments based on the two.
So we'll need, we'll need to go through each one of those listed positions in the budget and indicate that amount, that extended amount for that to.
Yes, exactly. And that's what the treasurer will do, what we're going to do, the aggregate number. Uh, that will be in terms of the increase in pay, you see the individual costs associated with each of those individuals, but you see the aggregate amount. But again, it will not exceed the existing budget of salaries in the fire department. Therefore, does not require budget amendment, simply those pay increases. And, uh, this is step one in the implementation, giving the things stable in our fire department. I just want to put men in the leadership, and the men, and I mean the leadership from sergeant and the firefighters, the interim chief, the interim assistant chief, all of the firefighters that are doing this work because we have never, I don't, I don't, I don't recall us being in this place in a long time. But we have been united on this issue.
And just one or two questions, just initial questions, we're being, I'm in a jam. I just got this one, I am.
Right.
On here where it says, uh, they'll have one year, uh, to go to those classes in order to be promoted. At the conclusion of that one year, if they still haven't met the objectives to move forward, what happens? Then they go back and refer to their previous salary, or they remain at this salary that we're approving now?
Well, they will maintain that salary, but they won't be able to afford promotion. They can't get the promotion until there's a pre-test. But they will remain at the salary because we didn't go outside of that class. We didn't put a sergeant in a lieutenant spot, we definitely didn't sergeant a spot. We just advanced this to a step that was pro, in the same fire.
And then I looked and I saw the list, uh, it was a total of twenty-one signatures on here from the fire department. How many individuals do we have currently serving in the fire department at this time?
Totally, we have thirty-one, thirty, only nineteen are certified at this time.
So out of thirty-one personnel, we had twenty-one that did sign off on it?
Yes, we have one smooth, we had two that was off. So that's six, and the other four, it's all possible.
Okay. And then also, in regards to the actual verbiage that needs to be created to allow this, mayor, if you could actually send to us the actual motion so that we can get it right? If we, you take this to the floor, we'll be able to get the correct verbiage of the treasurer, maybe do what she needs to do. So if you could send that to us, that's the way that motion be created.
Absolutely.
All right. Counsel, did anyone else have questions up here?
Yeah, I have.
Okay, counsel Thomas, then we'll go to counsel in the part line. All right, we'll go to counsel.
When, when was this pay structure approved by council? I, I remember seeing it, I remember requesting, I remember that. It was approved to you. So, so, the nine fifteen forty-four date, all that, or, or, if the will, you know, to use. All right, I, I just, I, I would like to see the minutes of that, of that approval because I recall, look, they're, they're all two schools, very similar, but it's asking for approval. So it's opted in office, which leads me to believe that this wasn't approved or not. And I don't mind, uh, giving it for, doing increases, but I would assume that we have a pay structure that we don't pay.
The only, the only difference in this, man, I think there was, all right? The only line that was, not a full load. I said line, it wasn't twenty-four, twenty. And you can see here, this assistant chief said sixty-five, and now actually approved sixty. So that, that was discarded, that chief was, was fresh.
No, that was more of a, by, 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 this one, this was, you know, coming key sharp.
Come from apparatus operational. City of sale personnel name, city of sale fire department whose regulations in knowing. And those questions. They're not going to be really important because we're going to more come from the city of sale personnel policy and the city of sale rules and regulations. And any other things. We're trying to let our guys know who to test.
Yes, sir.
Um, did we have any of the firemen that is already serving in um some of these uh files? And if they have to take the test for that particular file and they don't see in that on that test, would they be, would that right be taken away from them? And they're moved down or how how does that work?
The bill, if you're true, this may have to choose that. They'll be, they've been serving previously, that will be on the ten. We have two that have already been served and some form actually, form actually has been taken, so we're gonna, that they'll become permanent. We have two that serve that will be. And what we're gonna do is let them take the test. And you pass fail scenario, it will use. Right now. There's a president of sixty four. Sixty four is showing problems. So we're trying to work a solution as to where we can make this. As fast as possible. So hoping we'll deal with that if they can afford that level of jumping anywhere that we have to follow this nomination. And. I appreciate those questions and those questions were a set discussion. Uh when the fire fighters, the leadership approved this plan, this plan addresses those issues with it. And um I know the issue testing has been an issue, but the reality is that fire department and state. Who cannot not test, so the issue if you have how do you. Um based on what has happened in the past, what kind of corrective actions can we take this plan addresses those.
All right, and just so I can have some clarity on the, for the uh sergeant's position, we're looking at an adjustment of three thousand and forty three dollars and eighty four cents. And then for um the other adjustments for the firefighters, that was a difference of um ten thousand four hundred eighty dollars twenty cents. Or was it six thousand, is it six thousand six hundred and thirty nine dollars?
Yes.
So we're looking at a total, bottom line, we're looking at a total adjustment in our budget of ten thousand four hundred eighty dollars and twenty cents.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I got that question.
Yes, go ahead.
Would you predict that plan to involve the firefighters or any of the other firefighters or business plan, what would they have said?
All of them was in favor, that's why, that's why we have a sign, everyone was in favor.
Everybody.
Cause it's it's.
Thank you.
Uh and and father standing. I'm gonna ask the council as well as the citizens. Recognize these young men that's behind them, they've been working tirelessly, tirelessly for four years, some five, forty eight dollars on, twenty four hours off, forty eight dollars on. Then some about to work seventy two, just to make up for shortage, so that mean they work six days a week. So there's not all these there, there's three, there's three new ones there and we have four that have been done that are all.
Go ahead.
It's just our current policy, everything that y'all talk about here, in in legal, ethical, and moral.
All right, you get that language to the end, we'll take care of it.
I have twenty two.
Good afternoon, council, uh we have a request for the uh zero terms, six months, uh zero term for the main field, inner layer field. It's from uh Blue Ox and Bill Lucius, this is uh part of one nine nine at twenty one to at twenty two. Uh I think uh I think like seven thousand dollars. Uh seven thousand dollars nine hundred, not seven thousand, nine hundred and twelve. And this will be coming out of the uh.
Yes, ma'am, councilman Thomas.
Um it's the last meeting. We get asked for the least probably. Oh, we're still waiting on it.
So we get it as far.
I mean, one list. Okay. Okay, um and I think you were also taking up item number two by the inner layer field.
Yeah, I was just told that, I'm sure that was worth an update. And so she's not gonna speak on itself, okay, you'll figure out that policy.
Okay.
That's a message. That's just a make sure we respond. Second item. Third item. Okay, deals. I'd like to go back to number two. That's all. Okay. That's for. For group sample of that.
You you asking about uh boring test on the dirt pit land? I I don't know that that test was or was not conducted, council. Hi, and Ms. Love is present to talk about that, we did get the uh survey, the appraisal and I'm not sure about the test.
Yeah, I remember seeing that uh several months ago.
I I got it, but I also thought you were gonna recuse yourself from any questions about uh potential conflict of interest.
I don't have any.
With the dirt pit.
No, uh okay, I'm not, I'm not interested there.
Okay.
But thank you for for.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Cause everybody there, I have absolutely no interest.
I I understand, but that was not my understanding.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Love, I said that was not my understanding.
Well, I'm just not understanding either.
My understanding is that you were recusing yourself from any and all discussions that might potentially have a conflict for you. And the business uh that you're involved.
Uh no, sorry.
The business is not worked for, it's not involved in the site.
No, it's not with the sale.
Correct.
Let's all speak at one time and then proceed on to the next item, I think Councilwoman Carmichael, were you finished with your question?
I'm I'm asking whether we have, whether we have a court really for this property to see how much dirt it's actually responsible that I'm gonna value that.
Okay.
And my also was.
My expertise to help us it.
Okay.
And my also was, I wasn't aware that the the core drilling had taken place, I was not aware.
So answer this question in regards to, do we have that?
Is that I don't, I don't think we have a core drilling.
So that's the response to your question.
Yes.
Okay, all right, what other questions?
Appraisals were done, surveys were done, environment testing has been done. And um we did have survey to look at that basically what the city looks, it'll be up there in the last couple of eight years.
All right, are there any other questions regarding this matter?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman, take your time.
Uh do we have that information of whether uh that you share, uh here's the.
Yes, we have. Yeah, we have.
So what would you get to do again?
I think we can, we have, we have an app that's in center files, I think it was presented before, we're moving forward.
I think.
Thank you, much appreciated, all right, uh any others? Okay.
I I I did want to make an additional uh statement that the survey and appraisal. Neither of which came to, I think five thousand dollars was not presented to the council for approval, but those documents were presented and. If they were not given to the council, I'll make sure that we get them to you tomorrow morning, I I know that's been said before about another matter, but we'll get, I I'll personally get them to.
Before we proceed, all right, mayor.
There was a request from um Councilman, oh my, he made this up. An estimate for fifteen hundred, the recovery, the tar, the move of the council cabin until the work is done. The work is never to pass.
If that's his proposal, which indicates fifteen hundred dollar uh from late income, uh what would be the funding source? Uh or is this coming out of someone's discretion there? Okay. It's coming out of their discretion. Okay. Okay, all right, so we'll uh make sure that we create the appropriate posting. Any questions, any questions, thank you so much.
I have more. Just one of the full. Yeah. That I can discuss.
I think last, last time. I think last time we uh Mr. Carmichael, that's for that.
Is this resolution two oh eight twenty one, twenty two, resolution slip, we'll have a trust fund, what is not it? All right, council, this issue's come to us on more than one occasion, as you can see, a resolution has been prepared. And it breaks down those totals that we were made aware of in our last meeting, which totaled to be here in the forty thousand, here in the fifty nine dollars and seventy two cents. Uh it breaks down each one of our positions and the amount allocated uh for those trust fund employees. Are there any questions about those amounts, this is the same material that you presented at the last meeting. But now this, I think we had said this has to be done in resolution four, and so now we do have this resolution before us, are there any questions about this resolution?
So, Mr. President, so to me, we would vote for this, so that will make all of our funds be in our cap, we got one.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much, I think that takes care of that.
The last one, I would uh this is a payment for track generally. Track of destruction for the uh regent of the city of Marina. Uh and I was asked to find the distribution contract and I chose to review the discretionary. Everyone's discretionary. The total amount.
Moment.
Um.
That's half, please.
Total amount is seven thousand five hundred dollars over seven hundred thousand. Basically, that is the only thing that we found.
Okay.
Unless you have other.
Okay, all right, she's presented a recommendation, which we have a choice to accept by five or something to do. And as she indicated, the total for this would be seven thousand five hundred dollars. And she is proposing to take seven hundred dollars each one of our discretionary accounts, and I like what she said, if you have other ways to do this, she's willing to hear. So let's go ahead and pass it on to Thomas.
That that uh project, if you talked about uh. That project, that project we talked about that was done down at the Marina. It's all papers. Okay, they were, they were. And that is a project that would be in on regent's honor, who will be frequenting council for that. That project, the, it will be done on the council. Oh. And the reason why I asked you, I need to come up, say, yeah, I think. It was just a suggestion because uh we asked for a funding source and this was the, that's where I have to see this being used since everybody in the city uses the Marina at some point or not. Well, at least somebody goes down.
It's open to the entire city.
It's open to the narrative. And you asked us to pay, but they have one hundred.
Fifty dollars per council, I think that's the recommendation, do we have any other suggestions for a funding source other than our discretionary accounts? Go ahead, Councilman Thomas.
This is not the bar, our secret has uh an initial figure of fifty thousand dollars left in the budget for you. What's that, or? That's here, I'm ready. It's only four sixty, you have to consider that. The, it feels a bit rare to live in a right, it's not, I'm not sure why. It didn't come out there, it came out of tourism, uh management farm, it's, it's. Uh there's uh only thirty two percent of that, I would think. I'm just not sure why we're over that bar of stress, very. Uh I can see. A hundred thousand dollars, I can do parts. Only about, only thirty seven, thirty eight percent, it's gonna be uh through this one, I would say. If we, if we drop on something in one of those departments.
Well, I know only tourism budget for um. Uh point three, are you point three? I did look at that, I'm not sure exactly what you're looking at, are you looking at tourism, uh point three?
Uh yes.
Okay, I will, I will have to talk, we'll have to base with the property to get that, probably without grant.
Okay.
Uh councilman, exchange, maybe we'll come back, sorry, councilman.
It was raining yesterday, I can't remember what work was done, it's gonna be like a little work was done. And also, yes, we are using and. I don't think that we should put the real digits when we get money of areas. For this, to pay for this, I mean, I don't know if it's gonna happen, we need to get money back. I talked, I said, I would, I would talk to each other, the department, and to see if they don't know their budget, what they don't plan. Um, the strategy.
And and Matt Treasure, if that, if if the other departments, I think we said, recreational, what's in the park? Tourism, if those departments don't have availability within their budget, that I know some of that you don't like to do, that don't hire. Perhaps we will have to look at the budget surplus and create a line item from there to pay for this. Because this is a past prior obligation that needs to be taken care of. I think that this has been on our plate since we took office in November of twenty twenty and it's now twenty twenty two. So we need to get this taken care of, so if those other departments don't have availability, then perhaps you look at uh at that, at the surplus. And then also, could you possibly provide us also with the current total amount that we have in surplus? Could you give us that, you don't have to give it to us, but uh if you can provide, that'll help us with uh a working total, because we have some things that are going on. That we're gonna have some expenses we got to prove, so it'd be good to have that number for us too. Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments about this particular item, thank you so much, Matt Treasure.
One, two, three, this is recent twenty twenty one.
This is the. Oh, this was the treasure after we get, I guess.
This, this, yeah, this was the, this was the dredging, this was the emergency dredging process we need in order to prepare. The, the, to get those out for the Christmas over there. Yes, yes.
I remember that, I had confused with that other, there we had, I got this.
This was original, but I know that you lost to the tour.
That was the one we hit up?
Yeah.
Because it didn't pay me.
We had to get the uh four engineers permit.
Right.
And then somehow uh.
Wow, that we can. All right, next time.
I remember. I sent the opposition to transfer professional services. I have an area of eight, all the issues submit, applications to that, department transportation, this is a transportation, turn to program, tap, a program, uh and.
Um, good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Perkins, um the first resolution that you had before you is two zero six twenty twenty one, and that's the authorization to approve, approve the budget transfer. For professional services, um the city desires to solicit professional services for the purpose of grant writing. Um as we all are aware, the city has infrastructure, restoration and preservation, revitalization, and community and economic development projects. Um for which grant writing services are needed that require dedicated time and subject matter expert, um expertise. Of course, we know that there's a lot of funding opportunities out there, and so that's why, where this need um is grows from, for us to get a dedicated grant writer um or a firm. That can provide dedicated grant writing services, and so we would like to do this through a request for proposal process. Where we will seek to engage the services of one or more um consulting firms with a proven track record of identifying, writing, and submitting, and securing public and private grant opportunities. Um the estimated cost is at an amount not to exceed fifty five thousand dollars, um and this does require a budget transfer. Um and we are proposing to take that from the Paul, Paul Brom line item in our Grant Match account, which is one point seven thousand, and this is a correction, it's seven three zero four one. Not seven three zero two nine, but that'll be seven three zero four one, um and move that into the grant application line item, which is one point six thousand, six point five one zero five eight. And so um at this time on Tuesday, we would ask for your favorable uh vote on this resolution.
Right, council. I think this movement is played pretty well, this is item number seven, and as you can see, this would be, this would require a vote for approval of the resolution, R two oh six twenty one, twenty two. And also, we need to make uh adjust the budget line item, and this is for another uh grant writer, as we are seeking additional funding. Any questions? It's a resolution, R two, R two zero six twenty one, twenty two. It's, I don't understand, I'm sorry. Call them. Um.
Yes, we'll get it corrected for Tuesday.
Okay, if you could send those directly to me, Ms. Wu, I can make sure they're placed properly on the.
Okay, thank you, um now it is reflected correctly in the budget transfer for form, we just need to correct it in the resolution.
The resolution, oh, yes. Go ahead, Councilwoman Carmichael.
Is there a scope of work that should accommodate us?
Um. President Young, can you repeat that, I can't hear Councilman Carmichael.
Councilwoman Carmichael asked, is there a scope of work uh for the contractor services for this vicinity, right?
Yes, we do have a um proposed uh scope of work for the RFP, but this request here is to um is simply for the budget transfer.
We'll just get that corrected, uh lie down in the resolution and go from there, any other questions? Ma'am.
She said we have a real match to.
Uh I didn't see an indication of a match, Ms. Wu, you didn't mention anything about a match, I didn't see one.
Um, councilwoman.
To be allocated by the city from the twenty two, twenty three grant match budget. So we'll anticipate placing that in our next budget.
Okay.
From the grant. Okay.
Okay.
So during our budget, we'll make sure we remember that that's taken care of, and I'm sure, I'm sure. All right, you have.
President Young, President Young, for clarification, did we move on to the next resolution or are we still on the professional services?
Uh, no, it was, it was the.
You know, we have moved on to the next one, but we still.
Okay.
Thank you, uh give it a straight there.
Okay, thank you.
Anything about a match in the old six.
Now, if we've moved on to the tap grant um application, this is authorization to apply, but tap does have a twenty percent match. And of course, President Young has already um indicated that that would be, that would need to be placed in the upcoming budget.
So we will see about that.
Yes, ma'am, both will be resolution R two oh six and Ochs.
Okay.
Okay.
Move on.
Yes, sir.
I had a nine, uh, senators with two-year, twelve-streets, thousand. Uh, the engineers are here to drive that issue.
But I'm doing a lot of it. Oh, this change order is for a force of work on Ross Street, I'm sure, I'm aware of that. Uh, the original plan was to line that whole section of pipe from the ground draw, all the way to the we've been battling with the state for years trying to get them to allow us to do so. We originally wanted to open the, they didn't do that sanitary superline and replace it, but they said, no, uh, we can do the whole payment, so then we decided to line. Well, in order to line it, they had to TV, so they TVed and balanced several areas where we prepared it and it'd be. And on this one particular section drawn, First Avenue, Second Avenue, they did not get in that line because there was so much sand. And the sand had been coming in for a while. Sand was coming in because of the joint correct, that's a very old clay pot. And it was chugging everything up straight. Which is everything north of Second Avenue, causing backups, overflow, and the people's houses west of Ross Street. So we talked to the state and said, we just gotta replace this whole section of pipe. They said, well, do what you gotta do. We met with the mayor, Mr. Hayes, out there, was quite into the, I mean, it was an emergency situation because the sanitaries that were backing up overflow, backing up into people's houses, that have been affecting a lot of people. Uh, and so the work has been done, and it sticks the issue. They're out there now lining the pipes, uh, so it's just flowing perfect now. Uh, so that's what we're asking for this change order is to do that right. Where the work's already been done, but to pay for it, it's coming out of the, uh, A M S R F. Four point two million sanitary superline.
So the total difference on here is six thousand five hundred forty-seven cents.
Yes, sir.
So this is just an add-on to what we already have three. Question, go ahead, Councilman Carmichael.
How much is that in that, uh, S R F, S R F? Uh, I, I, it's, it's a little bit higher.
You put me on the bus, but I can get that to the mayor's office. I think the last time we seen, uh, that it pumped up, it was around five hundred thousand, it's that. But we'll get that to the mayor's office tomorrow night. It's, it's, we, we know the exact, I mean, which is close to this.
Now, this is a project on the property that y'all finished on that. Yes, ma'am, of course.
All right, any other questions? All right, we thank you.
Next item is the uniform purchase. Chief Wolford, uh, mission package. That's, that's, uh, item number ten.
And then, Mayor of the City Council. Uh, I'm asking for consideration to pay that part. Total thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
I need to.
The total for the, uh, uniform order for the entire party is wanting thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars eighty-five cents.
Right. And if you look at the purchase order, it does have on here what account will be covered as well. So it is budget. Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
Would it be the uniform by command or?
We are going to, uh, change, uh, previously, uh, it was approved that we went to a B U staff type. Uh, so that is where the uniform. Moved to the twenty percent.
All right, any other question? Thanks for listening.
She goes in and says, equipment purchase, uh, is not the, that happens. This is, this is. Uh, with this, this is wanting to acquire evidence to, uh, department, and I have one thing I'd like to try to explain. What is care system also to?
It is. The first, the challenge is to call it three, this is counted for it may. Uh, the challenge, the challenge is that, uh, the challenge is that, when you take the room, and you have, you set the challenge in the bedroom, pick a phone, get involved, take pictures, pick a phone, get involved, and take the pictures. And then make a three sixty picture image that we can download and look at everything that's going. We just don't mean to, um, and this way we can process everything and do it professionally. And they will touch everything in the room.
The, the representation portion of the, or for the shows to be budget appropriation, the cost of the transaction, ten thousand nine hundred and fifty. Yeah, the service exhibition. And then, uh, the, the next item, item twelve, um, 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 you, you're very familiar with that one. Well, discussion on the uniform transfer, I have thirteen five thousand dollars. And then fourteen, uh, uh, the Y O C A, uh, transaction you have in, in here. What, what you have here is, is a revised resolution, resolution two oh five, twenty-one dash twenty-two. Uh, and the resolution now reflects, uh, in response to the concerns that was expressed in the council meeting, I mean, uh, council stating that you did not want to inherit any risk associated with the acquisition of the property. Am I correct on that? Uh, did I interpret that correctly? I know, uh, President Young didn't vote, I'm just asking, I might focus on what your position. I, I heard that the concern was the risk. Uh, and so what I would like for you to go to the last page. And what you will find on the last page, in section fourteen, is really an attachment in A. And what attachment in A shows is that, uh, the brown facility, mayor's to the city, uh, we now have a solution to deal with the risk of the city accepting the property. Uh, and that solution is the city will immediately, when we sign the transaction to accept the facility, we will also be signing the document to transfer that property to the Selma Housing Authority. Uh, the chairman of the board of directors of Selma Housing Authority is present. Uh, Mr. Wolford is here. This is the discussion, uh, Mr. Randolph and I had great discussions about this. They are eager to do, uh, what we have, some trouble, some concerns about them. And so the risk issue is being addressed by an immediate transfer of the property. In other words, it would be a property pass through versus a property acquisition. The Y O C A, there's the rules of this unwanted, uh, facility. Uh, the city does not carry a risk that was a concern. Uh, the brown facility becomes public, owned by the housing authority, so we still have a publicly owned facility. And the citizens gain access to the brown facility with a partnership through, uh, the housing authority. Uh, the city also, we also, I'm also advocating and suggesting in this resolution that the city supports the Y O C A, Walker Johnson, and the Selma Housing Authority with the dollar per dollar distribution as it was originally intended, uh, with the dollar going towards, that we continue, you know, the contract that we're under now, then at the end of June, uh, and so I'm advocating and suggesting that we, uh, go into a contract with the housing authority and with the Y O C A, fifty-fifty split, the Walker Johnson and Brown facility. Uh, because of the money and how they should go over the facility that was originally targeted for. And then the city then also, I'm also advocating that the city satisfies the application of the debt diversion. And that is to satisfy, uh, the requirements of the other dice. That for both that the city had, uh, to, uh, to contribute the money to the other diversion. Uh, and that we satisfy that. And then this resolution that you have, before you, that I will be asking, council, the faithful conservatives on Tuesday, reflects what I just shared in summary, and I'll take any questions at this time.
Any questions, council members, regarding resolution two oh five, twenty-one slash twenty-two?
Not that I remember, but then I asked, I could reason all the, we, we didn't stay here.
Any other comments, questions at this time? No further questions at this time.
Okay, I just want to get the most discussion, can't behind this, hey. Yeah, a lot of this on Tuesday. Additional concerns about the transaction, the risk factors that were expressed in the previous meeting. We'd love to have an opportunity to address, you know.
I think that what's called some, uh, trepidation, we had a chance to see it here.
That's right.
Go ahead.
Why, why is this such a problem for your house, with the city?
Well, it could, but it's, right now, the city has, the city and the Y O C A has an agreement that's already executed uh, to deal with that transaction and, uh,
Are you sure the Y O C A pulls the order that way?
Well.
Have you heard, or?
I, I've spoken with them, I had a conversation. And, uh, I think the issue is the council, it, it's, I mean, there is no option in the contract, in the contract. It says shall, in other words, shall transfer the property without a, 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 a permit of the council. Uh, and so it's, it's not like that there is an option here. It, it is, it's in, it's in the paper. And so, um, it is.
And, and one of the things I remember, and I'm not commenting directly on this as I have said, but I would like, uh, for everybody who provided, you then had the thing you gave us. It had the original twenty thirteen contracts, and then it had the last renewal, which was twenty twenty. And we know that since that time, that there was some renewal contracts. But I didn't have those in my package. I don't think anyone else had those renewals in there.
So this, there was actually no contract, what they gave was an extension of the twenty thirteen.
So.
It's in the minutes.
Okay. So there's no actual contract that says, uh, that's, okay.
It's in, it's in the minutes, uh, each, each time they did an extension. The first, they did an extension of one. The second, they did an extension of two. Then they terminated, and then they came back and did the twenty twenty contract. But there is a provision in the twenty twenty contract that adopts the terms of the previous extensions, which are extensions to the twenty thirteen contract. So.
Go back.
And there's the legal term, and y'all know what it is. It wasn't legal term, but that's.
Relation back.
Relation back.
They said relation back.
Relation back, yeah, it's, yeah, yeah. And that, and that's, and that's why, that's why I said that we still have the option there is a sign of twenty thirteen provision. In fact, in that twenty twenty, we are talking to twenty twenty, SNL, we have a good thing, but
I think, I think.
It raised that, it stipulated that the, that, that, that contract continued upon the Y O C A satisfying of the, uh, of the amendment, of the last amendment, which ties back to, which was an extension of the previous contract. Uh, this agreement shall, uh, condition upon the Y O C A being in full compliance with and satisfying all requirements of a separate contractual agreement entered into with the city for this year, uh, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, which would then be extension, is what they ordered on in the council meeting. It, it may be it's not the, uh, you know, council work, if you will, but there was a vote, there are votes in the minutes, if you will, uh, for both of those extensions.
Well, I'm not commenting on the substantive and specific. I just want to make sure I had it figured. Thank you for that.
No, no, no.
Uh, go ahead, councilwoman Thomas, and councilman Carmichael, did you ever hear that?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, one more. But, uh, I have, as we mentioned, I remember the season, yes.
Twenty nineteen.
Forty, I think, will be placed in the S. Well, not a, not a regular contract, the, the new contract was, uh, heard of that, uh, in twenty twenty, correct?
That, that's correct. I guess, I guess my question is to the council members in the digital, are we looking for reasons to do this? Are we looking for reasons to not do? Um, because this, at the end of the day, uh, none of us are going to own the facility. Facility will be publicly owned, which means the public and the public will be watched.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas, we're gonna talk, we're on, yeah.
See, I think I read this in the last meeting. But this does not own the ground by. I, I, I'm there.
I'm reading.
Okay, so why do we think that this board for the Y O C A is going to give the city itself their building?
Because they signed a contract to do.
No, sir, that, that contract is void.
That's your, that's your legal interpretation, huh?
Okay, and, and I don't think it, I don't think the council should be made, I think we actually need to be made aware of all the facts. All the facts, so that we can make the proper decision. Don't just give us portions of it. Give it to, give all of that, give up, give us all of that, so that we can make a proper decision for the city itself. It does not, if you to our turn. The city itself legally does not own the ground by N C A.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, guys.
Council, and then, then we'll see you. I told you, council president, did I not give the council all of the documentation relating to this transaction?
We requested that.
And, and I, and I, did I not provide that information? Yes, I cannot determine whether the council read, but it was provided. And I just want to make that clear, because the implication was that information was being filtered and then passed.
I, I'm saying, when you're discussing, when you're talking about it, it's a fact.
Well, if, if, I, I, I can appreciate that, but I think the information I gave you was at least two inches thick. But I think the information I gave you was at least two inches thick on board. And I cannot stand here and recite all of that documentation to you in these sessions. I tried to answer the questions as best I can.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on, as this time has been discussed. All right, let's move on. Thank you.
The last item I had, um, the resolution that Councilwoman Chris Thomas asked. And I think it's in terms of you have this in your report. A resolution on, on the events uh, way within the, you have, you have, but it is in my packet, it's here, resolution on one seven four twenty-one. Council indicated that you had mixed emotions, opinions about it. I would suggest to the council that whatever, this will just be my recommendation, you know, uh, and you, you don't have any problem, you don't have to choose. Uh, I would suggest that you, whatever requests that you have on the table, that you grant father them in, and go ahead and do those. And then consider the resolution as recommended by Councilwoman Chris Thomas. Uh, finally, uh, I have a couple of announcements that I want to make. And uh, the Southern Youth Program program tremendous success. Uh, we had, uh, I don't know the exact number, approaching a hundred, um, but a tremendous success, we had a great response. So I do put a citation about that and uh, I want to just acknowledge that, that we don't, with every guy. Also, to acknowledge the work that was done by the planning and development office, like that, uh, with the bureau on the local center wall, breakdown, not by them as well. And I want to just something to remind the citizens uh, that hopefully you, uh, and the government is not in the danger of probably approaching somewhere between fifteen and twenty counts. Uh, so let's see here, let's see.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you. All right, now we'll move on to our attorney's report. Uh, attorney.
Yeah, Ms. Rose, was all our kids, uh, we have these kids that did not get a proper job. We have a hundred. How many kids did we have?
We, we, I don't want to, I think we got that situation, it's all right.
Okay, I, I would want your kids.
Basically say addictive. It's just letting us know that the council previously discussed it and they want to look into it. But they did not take a vote to approve. That would require a vote of this council to actually approve. So pending those procedures. So that whole and actually the process has changed since then because you all modified forms. Remember we throughout that process about renaming. So we'll have to follow the process as be added. Now, then upon presentation of all that information and they get the necessary signatures. Then a resolution form will be presented with it and determine whether or not we're going to vote. Uh if you approve it, is this going to be for a portion of Plan Street? Or is this for, is this request for the entire?
The minutes point out in parentheses there. A portion of Plan Street to be changed to Jersey Street from water avenue back to the. Big fat company on.
And we want to make sure we offer full clarification on that because we know that we ran into some issues with the street rename.
Yeah, and that's why the minutes were referred to begin with to make sure the exact language.
Yeah, so it's portion, we want to make sure that's clear for the record. If this is a portion, if those citizens in that area aren't being petitioned for that portion. So uh really and truly, um that council did take a vote to start the process. That council took a vote to start that process. So in order to not start that process, this council would have to vote not to start the process. Otherwise, that process should be going on.
And what I just said convinced the president, if he recalls, that I consider this a statement of beginning the process. Nothing is completely.
Right, and so like I said, unless for clarity, unless we offer a motion that is approved to stop the process. Then you all are well within your right to go ahead and do what needs to be done and bring it back to the council for up or down. But go ahead, uh councilman Thomas.
And also we need a sign of what's going to be responsible for the.
Payment or the site?
The payment of the site.
That's, that's an excellent question, and that's why not only the petitioner would be the one agreeing. Not only asking not only for this to be done, but agreeing to make the payment. So what I also said at the minister was this council provided me about two or three times about this. Said he wanted to make sure that the rest of the council was too. I think that.
And that would be councilman Thomas?
Exactly.
Okay.
Who pays what?
Yeah, you'll, you'll.
It was his motion.
The actual.
It was his motion.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Attorney.
I have number three, uh that has been notice given to uh the mayor's office and my office. Of the desire of Mr. Randall Miller to propose to locate a cemetery at Flott property. In a, at the intersection, J. Onchestra, Minnesota, Paulway, Kahala, and says Hoover. Hoover, Hoover, uh the mayor's office and my office were notified of this intent. And that calls into play section twenty-two dash twenty dash four of the state statute about co-pleasantries. Or about number seven, which points out that whenever there is a proposal to do that, to do just that. Before either county or incorporated city or town, which is what the settlement is. That application then must be brought to the mayor and council. And that the next step from there was to contact the board of health and county for investigation from a sanitary standpoint. And making such investigation accountable, the council take into consideration the proximity of the whole cemetery. Or extension of a cemetery to human habitation, to nature of the soil, the drainage of the soil. Basically around danger of pollution of air, springs, and water, such other conditions surrounding. As a matter of a sanitary aspect of the solution. So it has to, we got the mayor and council are given the possibility of this stat, this statute. To contact the health department for their weighing in on assessment. They'll return that information to this body of the mayor and from that point you have a decision. Uh Mr. Miller and uh his attorney will gamble credits if you have any questions.
Okay, uh any questions for any council members at the side? So, so uh looking, as, as I'm looking at statute and just, just seeing this. Um has the board of health, have they already weighed in on this?
They have.
Well, yes and no, they weighed in, but they haven't weighed in the rest of the county, the mayor and the city, city council.
So we would have to take a formal vote to have him, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying under the statute, you don't have any choice but to contact the board of health to ask them to weigh in. And I'd be having to travel in case this is just to establish that with the council.
Okay, do you need a vote for that or is that?
No, I, I.
You don't need a vote for that?
I see the statute, but I need you to be aware of your.
That's excellent, so you're just, this is for information purposes.
Basically.
Okay, so you're just bringing this to us to inform us that this procedure is being initiated?
And any communication will be forwarded to you rather than to the health department.
Correct, so there's nothing for this body to do right now?
Not at this point.
Not at this point, we'll wait to hear back from the board of health, the health department, I'm sorry. Any questions about this uh council, uh councilman Thomas? Here.
Yes, I. Do we give funding?
Well, we, we can't from here.
No, I would say it's.
She's talking about Bill Miller. Oh, okay, if, if, if necessary.
I can be more clear.
I think I got it, go ahead, if, if you feel like it need more.
I, I can say it very, very quickly, I don't know, I'm gonna do it in time, but basically all this is, is, is Mr. Miller. Uh his may have application to have a cemetery. The first step is that the mayor and the council together then refer it to the health department. The health department has the list of things that have to meet its standards. And then they report that back to the mayor and council. And then that's when you will vote on whether or not to allow it or not. Uh and, and it's, it's really nothing for you to do right now, other than to refer it to the health department, which I think would involve. I had one citizen, I was trying to find the mayor, all of you all, I'm self-proclaimed. I know it is not an easy job and I appreciate all the people who live in the.
Thank you. Uh well, just for, as you know, Bill and Spencer's uh attorney gamble and our attorney asked. Do you think, uh just to make sure there's no issue down the road, should we uh pay the places, the consent of the, a vote to refer it to the health department? Or do you think that's not necessary?
I don't think you need to, you just need to tell the health department, do you have that application? And then they will get it with Mr. Miller, they've got the list of things that they look at uh to, to, to see whether it would qualify. Landwide, drainage wise, and that sort of thing.
All right, so attorney, our attorney would have that proposition, you was necessary.
I have one question, attorney, attorney, Madison. Uh at what point would it be appropriate to do public hearings uh within the neighborhood to get neighbors' opinions about this transaction? Would that be before we go to the health department or after?
I, I don't know that, if, if the statute itself doesn't speak to any, not like zoning, it doesn't speak to any public hearing. It just says after the report of the health department is made and given back to the mayor and council. And the mayor and council vote on it, it doesn't, there's nothing in the statute about public hearing, I suppose. I suppose the council would do that if it wanted to, but, but there's nothing in the statute about, it's not like zoning.
Thank you, thank you. Just wanted to make sure that we went back to knowing the people. Well, Mr. Attorney, you can proceed, I believe whatever you need to know concerning referral. Go ahead, councilman.
It, it's referring to the application about that. City education or?
Application from Mr. Miller to the city.
All right.
And that's what has been presented to the city, I, I sent that for almost a month ago now.
It was, that, that's, I guess we don't have that, so I just like to see that for after us. You know, I know, I know you said we don't have to take a vote necessarily out of, out of burden, out of.
Any, any, anything attorney gamble that sent me out of that.
I mean, I, I, I've heard that, that it says the city council, or the city council.
Uh, no, if that's, if that's where our council.
I got one here and I can let, like, it's.
If you can get it, Ms. Ellison, that'd be great, if she could get it to all the councils. Mrs. Ellen.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, uh. I'm good, I'm good, all right, anybody else have any questions for this?
Give me, yeah.
All right, I think we're, we're good, we're good, all right, thank you. All right, we can move on to our next items. Let's see, Ms. Miller.
I have number four, uh councilman Randall, I know that he was on the jazz, jazz on the grass. Then what I heard the last time, last words, well, actually the council meeting, I think again, was that with jazz on the grass approach. Quickly as this law stated, Julie, uh that you need a mechanism for deciding what to do around the fees which you didn't pass away.
That's right.
I did a couple of things uh last year and one of them this year, I checked to see what was the best mechanism. It turns out that there are essentially two mechanisms, waiver of fees or contract. I tried to vote, I'm giving you a waiver of fees, uh if you want, the contract is up to you, but the waiver of fees resolutions are two hundred dash twenty-one slash twenty-two. To declare the jazz on the grass is a best for a public purpose event. And it says just exactly what it sounds like. Based on the wealth, the worth to the community and its impact, the importance that you would leave.
And, and I, I see this resolution in the packet, but I remember that former housewoman Benjamin came to our last meeting, I believe. And she indicated those two requests she made. And we said we were going to bring those up in work session and vote on those at the next council meeting. So those two requests that she made, I can't remember the specific uh request, but I believe it was two of them. And we're supposed to be voting on those uh at the next meeting, so those will be placed on uh the agenda to vote on, on uh Tuesday. Now, this resolution is in addition to, to those two requests. Cause I don't, I, this is just declaring it a public event or whatever. So council, you have a bill before you, but that still doesn't impact the request that she's already made that we will have to vote on. Because we've already discussed that we would vote on. So just want to offer some clarity, this resolution is different from the request that councilwoman Benjamin and Jazz on the Grass made. It's clarified, councilman Thomas, then councilman. Is councilman Thomas, you got something? Just checking, all right, councilman, change your time.
Uh since this event has been going on in city scale, I would consider it a grand ball. Because it's, it benefited our city people coming out, which is something that city, the city didn't have it for, for quite some time. And it does bring people into our city, they come along, they're great, when we do these things, they're so great. And I consider that, uh I would like you to, if the resolution that you're saying was a strong favor. If you're saying.
This, the resolution we presented tonight is declaring the Jazz on the Grass musical festival a public purpose.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, it, it does say uh include waiver of fees, all that, uh so make it a little bit.
Well.
It was whether or not.
Uh I'll go back in my, we'll talk to Ms. Ellison, their work two requests, we'll check to make sure that, that the request is satisfied. And also we'll check the, we need to check that.
What did you do when you said?
But I, I, I don't see any reason why this can't be voted on in addition to approving the request.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, uh you know, I'm asking you, cause you know, there's, there's anything that people keep coming back every year for the same thing for the.
And that's what this would do.
Okay, that's what I'm.
This would satisfy this, and we all would know from henceforth, this would be a public purpose event. All right. All right, so we'll, we'll check that and we'll take care of that on Tuesday's way with the assistance of Ms. Ellison. All right, you can proceed with your next item, Mr. Attorney.
Item five is a resolution R two zero two zero three dash twenty-one slash twenty-two to renew the battery sales tax contract with Avenue. As a point of, we've been doing this sometime.
All right, we have item number five, we've seen these before, ladies and gentlemen. This is now for to back on sales tax uh to allow Avenue uh to collect those. We've uh, we see these, it's pretty much the same contract we have with the others, but still take the opportunity over weekend to do it for yourself. All right, next item, Mr. Attorney.
And the next item is similarly, uh about item number six is also a contract for the purpose of sale taxes, discovery of.
Okay. The resolution. This is to renew the business license discovery and recovery services with Avenue.
Resolution number R two zero four dash two, uh indeed to renew business license discovery.
Thank you.
September forty twenty-two, both those contracts will be fixed, uh September this year.
All right, thank you, any other questions about those two items for Avenue?
The ones that you have in the bank.
Yes, ma'am, you're right, all right, I think those are the items, Mr. Attorney, we appreciate your assistance. Now we move on to the business items, councilman Thomas, you have eight items.
Eight, and they don't have a quote, so.
Okay.
We asked for a quote. All the property is off, if they don't have, put it back. I'm asking, uh this councilman, this was a trip. If we can get out twenty twenty five, uh we, uh far away, just to become, how are we all? Where the process of doing that draft, I want to start, we will complete this process and, I'm not sure how long that's gonna take, or hopefully it will be. Okay, I said it before, but I'm not sure what a key has to be, that will be. Okay, so you see, you just wait on the draft, you wait on, you're in the feature of the draft in twenty-two. Well, when we're sort of finished with the unit, the draft, as well as this, this part of the show as well. Okay. But now, because some of the things don't give, walk around it, that's why I want to know. Next, uh, um I have a project that I must meet, uh this is a protocol. I have a deal, and I'm wanting to see if we're ready for the, the contract for. It is for the wellness park that local club donated to, to help me in my community. Four types of instrument, hopefully, place over there, all for one. That's it, and I have a deal I need, and hopefully my, I'm interested, I too much, we need to go on, but I do have a, I do have a pick of. Purpose of the court, but I got to get all of the information in, I do need to promote that, but I have to come out of my voice. Three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five, that's the whole area, go down off of Yama. For public service, for, for the people to come to, to bring their kids, we're gonna have to clean that area up and do a lot of grooming. And also we would have the, uh, the instruments, we have to be placed in a, in a, in the ground, not come up. And it has to be, uh, built in like a park, uh facility for the, for the kids. So a young man gave up another car and I would only saw that, I got this information to the president of the.
Who, who will be playing in your equipment?
Uh.
Who will be putting the equipment in?
He will, his name is, uh, he did something.
Say it, but you said it three thousand eight twenty is for him playing with me.
He gonna, but simply put, all the law, uh everything that I suppose he does. Cause it has to be, it has to be, uh, what the work could do, because this is a type of fan issue. So I had to get, put it in, you know, and it has to be some kind of concrete. And we will have to put a certain way into a diet, friend, or how it's have to be. And he did one, I went over it into another area of the park, and this is not, so I'm, I'm, this would be the first time that we will have something like that. But we're going, you know, we got the area, you know, it's going to have to be done. But I got the first game. That's the one that we're on. My next is, uh, Misses, uh, Misses, uh, period, you know, we have people of the, of the border, of the panel. A mountain, we expanded for we MSX. Okay, I would have that. And we want to be, or bring, how do we get the last portion of the, the results of their jobs, uh, to government? Each, they didn't give to, it's a fair call, I think, uh, I think, um. I, I think, I have to cut that one, you see, for the other one, it'll do like a hell.
Didn't have a little bit of vision, that maybe you were.
It's like phase two or something like that, like they.
There was some discrepancies in the, uh, in the, uh, finance departments, I'll see the procedure back.
So you can, we can, oh, okay, we just throw that back, people give enough views, just for that, uh. Okay, Mr. Eric, the number, I would like to know, uh, we, uh, the credit card for the city council, we never had to, uh. Moving on now, on that trip, uh, we always hotel in, also our training. Always will take care of under the credit card, so I'm trying to find out what is the problem with the credit card? Because we need a credit card for the council, so when we got to do something, uh, go out of town, or pay for our hotel, or pay for our training. We should be able to have that, that we take care of, we should not be leaving the cell phone. If it was shit, so put in our account so we can pay for our hotel. We never have to do that, and uh I want to know, is it a problem, is our credit bad or is it, we don't have a duck? What is, cause we need, if we do need a car, we need to, can we get a car?
I'm not familiar with the past, uh, the travel policy, I will live in two, I know, I know there is a credit card, I'm no hook for that, and I'm glad to live in this home. And we now, uh, we're sticking, uh, within the process of doing another credit card for higher limit. But let's look into that, but I'm not familiar with, um, the travel, or regulations.
Well, but can I recommend to you, could you please give the council a credit card so we can have, when we can pay for our hotel? And, and our, and our training, instead of all, everybody using that one credit card that you have? It, it, it's, it's hard, we need, so when we do it, go out of town to our training, that, um, our secretary will be able to book our rooms. And pay for our classes, because they don't, everybody else, nobody booking, we trying to. I have to worry, I mean, I'm people, I'm, we don't do that, they can't get us our car. It is pretty, like, that, I, I think it was maybe months ago, I think we had a problem about, everybody had, was trying to skip a line, I think it may have been doing. Uh, book.
The work, the future.
Yeah, work, the future, we couldn't book anything because we only had a small, uh, number, and I think I, I made a motion to look into. Getting a credit card months ago, and, and last week, I, I, I witnessed Jamie. We shouldn't have to get a hotel with a check that I'm paying, and, and everybody don't have that, it's just less than some people can pay for another person. We got the motel, they do not tip cash. So we had to take care of that deal, and, and I think that's a bit embarrassing. But we just want to ask that, do you go ahead on and, because I don't see why we don't have, I don't know what happened in the past, I can't worry about it. Can you check downstairs, now we need to go ahead on and get one because we shouldn't have to be held up because everybody in. Then I have to use that second credit card, I had five thousand dollars, that's not enough for a physical bill. And so I just want to, uh, ask that you look into the council, and, and because you got paper trail. Whoever checked that credit card out, you have to match what you see. So it, it is no issue about somebody that needs to use it because you got to be responsible for what you did. Cause I know, I'm gonna take care of it for, and I'm gonna use the credit card, I'm gonna take care of it for.
What, I think you made a motion, right?
I, I think, uh, I think, I think last time I heard, um, you was gonna vote to P and C and shake off.
We have made applications for you.
We come to our back, yeah, we come to back, and it's like.
Some of it, some of it has to do with our, with financial records. Because we have not a record on our own.
Oh, that's why I.
Our credit, correct.
Yeah, I know. So we didn't want to, it can't be the way it's like, okay, all right, thank you, uh. Uh, the next thing, uh, is the K B and I don't need to cop that without P. Uh, I have to teach by that, and nobody will hear me, yes, we do, we do. And I'm gonna skip all of them, give it all. Uh, I'm through, because I know I, I had to be taught to it, I'm through with that, go ahead on the date first. I can't get on.
Yes, okay, all right, uh. Council, I know, I'm here. All right, let's see, I'll probably quit, the, uh, the first one is M I missions contract. Basically, I just took the privacy contract that was issued from both in, uh, June of twenty twenty. Uh, had it all, I think it was written out, and, uh, and made three M I missions. Uh, all, everything that, that they do, and, uh, no, no terms changed from what the contract was the same. Exactly, they, uh, all did change, we're basically, um, who have, uh, changed all that. they saw it very good, so I'll wait until a few days and we get all that. Uh let's see. Uh Valerie, I I brought this up for basically when they when they closed off Dallas Avenue on that year. Circle of the street and Valerie Drive. Um the uh there's a quote, the tax on Tuesday. Uh resolution to extend our prepared. Uh the amount is three thousand dollars to go on to write, uh just say y'all or as, the other four years, all the city of summer, where is the tax for short? Uh for shock area construction, we have three thousand dollars for a lot of stuff in another uh extended for public health one oh eight uh six thousand nine one zero seven zero dot three. That's uh my only discretion. All right, the uh next one is the uh that's why I just, I I can't, I don't understand why the uh service paying services pay uh my general fund discretionary account when when the contract and the vote was to pay uh uh one three uh trust my four weeks discretionary account. Uh we've got, we've got a payment from the biggest allies. Uh and and I wrote that resolution for so it's a business transfer of seven thousand dollars. From trust on one three discretionary account. Uh and the numbers two, one three general account and numbers paid to the state term contract in fact of all December fourteen twenty twenty one for services of one three.
Didn't we go on that some
We did, we did, and we we brought it out of the account initially, we both put it out of the account according to the contract, we got fifty dollar league and we're throwing it in the sewer, so so I'm making an official resolution to make sure we have and how this happened and where we're going exactly. Uh that's I'll be asking for a little that for Tuesday. Uh let's see, the uh the other one, the last one is uh the short traffic signals that were sorted. Uh 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 old old one three council person in the two thousands uh I have
I
No, uh earlier, one, earlier, uh So so she got a donation from the city of Gadsden, they're in short traffic signals way back there, they agreed, donated, and everybody been trying to do this. Uh I thought I just said it was been uh I will trust on four ways uh to get this completed and get these L D lights and so into these uh traffic signals. So this is a quote uh uh scope of work. Uh basically from from this company, I don't think, uh they've they've been working with this guy from day one, early two thousands. Waiting on the city to bring this forward, uh Jason Dick. And and uh so I'm still a resolution to extend one three all these trust warrants uh to have those L E D lights. Uh basically the the entire traffic signal will be uh retroverted and restored for uh L E D models and and eventually I'll have, I'll have to a contract for somebody to put those signals up and then mention that here, there's battle track code M U T C D saying sensation forty dot four one upper signal basis on approach standard, that you should have two primary signal bases uh per approach and so we're just trying to uh make that kind of source, I will just say. And um I said the rate.
Oh, you found them? Found them?
Uh yes, yeah.
It can save you a whole
And they're they're, yeah, they're guys. They're about, they're about to turn a building down. I think you want these lights before we turn the building down? All right, let's see, uh just one more question about this, sorry.
Did you ask about the Solomon holiday?
Yeah, yeah, but uh this will take this uh Uh so so once he gets all that done and completed, and I mentioned that in in this resolution that that there's a uh now there will be resolved, C S L's exception to tax, well, the story gets out of traffic signals to be renovated and retroverted with L E D lights by Jason Dick, it's the way we push the story out of that zone. And they further resolve that eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars to extend it to four three dollar trust hold these number count. Dot 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 with the attached critical work with fifty percent of the high rate and fifty percent of the does good work.
Mr. Griffin, I can give you a chance to ask my very important question because nobody from me could possibly get it here. I just want my citizens to know now, uh they can be doing that, but I'll show my evidence at the council too.
Are you gonna listen? Well Sorry. What was that? Yeah. Was it well? Uh they uh uh title eleven forty three eighty four, I just want to make sure uh that we're all clear with that. Uh mayor shall require reports to be made to him by any officer of the city or town that such town as he may direct for and may be prescribed by the council. And shall at least once in every six months make a statement to the council everybody of the financial condition of the town or city. Showing particularly all temporary clothing indebtedness and for what created and the steps he proposes to take for the protection of the credit of the city or town. We've been touching on all that, this one little thing right here touches on the credit, touches on the on the hills, where they are, they're supposed to report to the council, this is a state section right here that says this. And I think we need to have a local resolution three and four seven and 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 explain exactly what uh we want them to do and if that includes attending the meetings, then maybe they should attend the meetings uh to the end and and without unless they have prior notification or something, uh do that, I mean, I'm not a way to kind of get them to say, our data assignments and another thing that you had was was flip the agenda around. First, that's a big good idea to do. Uh let's hope that so we can get some reports to figure, we have nothing, we've got a single report from a department since we've been in on like a report as to the financial and that's where we are, what to do and uh so that's gonna it just makes it real difficult to make a decision. Uh and and the one after that, it included H R reports. Uh uh I think before we move forward with the A plan, I'd like to know uh how our employees feel about working for the city itself, so I would like to have some reports on uh uh any anything that that the employees are turned into H R, exit interviews, two weeks ago to this department or not stay working for the city itself. Uh and and be sure, and it is actually funny because uh if you accept the job at a certain price, I would think if you're happy, you'll stay there for a while. Uh if you're not happy, obviously, then uh you'll leave and it's not funny if you accept the job at a certain, at a certain uh weight. But but you don't have to, right, but it will say that in the exit interview or in the two weeks ago, they give whatever that we should have done that way will know what what's going on. And and they may all say, I'm not excited enough, they will say, I don't know, we can fix that. But just, that's, I just want to make that request.
I have a question came to us, you know, we never have some with their, our our pay money. Where are we going to, are we gonna wait to do that uh? Doing that next budget or you have, what what what?
I want one person, so
You didn't talk about the waiting on the break sheet from the, the mayor from.
We'll see now, exactly, but
Because the reason why I asked you, there's some of the company uh possible, you know, we can't keep this nine dollars, ten dollars out. And they may accept it off. And they are looking at us and they ask me and I keep telling them that uh we need uh our pay money. And uh we need to do something because it uh a lot of them are kind of not fair to be giving students nine dollars out, they come to work, they work here and there with the selling out. Or we need to get, we need
Uh the kid in the same week, uh it's a little labor, extra work. And all the dirt they grabbing it close around
Everybody will be tired.
When we come in, they'll be getting nine dollars. Ooh, everybody. Except for
I thought we broke it off and I didn't want to be no man of the department.
Yeah, it's it's ever shot up and manned up. That's your part. Yeah, that's uh the crossbar for it.
Oh, well, there you go, every day for school, you tell them But that's why I guess uh that we need to
So so I thought we didn't know that the crossbar for getting paid for
They are making it.
Yeah.
They're not being there, the man downstairs, they can't hear us.
So 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 if somebody's not paying, what we budgeted for that, that would be
Justin, I was getting a few months ago, she brought a total for two, and nine dollars.
That's right, yeah, I mean, I remember that's what we saw when we voted and we approved that that already working, we approved that. So we need to look at that. Our budget, their free and and make sure that it doesn't say nine dollars, that's what we're all saving for.
Well, they're actually, they're not getting nine, they have a
It is what they're giving them. So if they calculate that what it's being, it comes out to be nine dollars.
Yeah. That's something about that.
If we have that budget, it was an activity. So we need to
Well, uh there is this not the case that what we budgeted is what people get paid? But when 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 someone wants to increase, that that has come before council. But what we, I'm pretty sure there's a statute that that says that salary or quarter, go quarter, you want the budget set. You're you're getting choose to make somebody that has a couple of choose places, uh now you can't place like that, that's not up there.
I think okay, it would to be honest, I can't really answer every of those questions, but that's my hundred and fifty other any of our question. I pay for it, we we pay for it, we aren't salesperson. We can be, they can be they ask, they kind of, they're simply, they're looking at the kids and that.
Uh Attorney Madison?
Uh I don't know what the budget reflects as the budgeted amount for pay for crossing guards. But the treasurer's right, they are getting paid seven twenty five an hour. I did represent a resolution to the council for raising that to nine dollars an hour, it did not pass, which he just said, and she's a, she's right, I wouldn't be able to answer the budget versus actual question without input from not only H R but also finance.
Councilwoman Thomas?
It did not pass because we asked that the mayor brings back all of the salaries at one time instead of doing any portion, that's what we were actually waiting for.
I understand that.
And that was, that was my
I understand that, but what she said, the treasurer said is also accurate.
Then I'm ready to
Well, if this is not without, if you've got to uh but that's that's
Okay, so let's get a point of resolution here. We need to have document first statement, ma'am, Councilwoman Kristy Thomas of all of the salaries. Not one department salary, not one employee salary, we need all. Do we make that request, I'm assuming uh Madam Treasurer, since that is a matter that involves finance because it does have um budget items in there for salary and I'm assuming also probably involve H R as well. Uh due to the fact that these are colleagues that you work with, could you navigate that? And offer some assistance in that, uh hopefully you'll be able to get that for us. Uh because the problem here is things are presented sometimes. And the reason that actions are taking place is because the requests and documents to go with the requests are not submitted for the council to review, so that puts us in place where we can't. So Madam Treasurer, if you could facilitate that, that would be greatly appreciated. If you could provide us with a list of all the salaries so that we can have some final determination. Because we said here before and will say again, we want to make sure people are paid, family and receive their decent, a decent wage. And uh if there is an issue where a full time employee is receiving seven twenty five, that needs to be corrected if that situation exists. But I do understand that our difference is for part time for seven twenty five, but we need to make sure that everyone's treated fairly and is that some everybody's feeling about that?
She said, so for Bobby listening, they were watching, because they felt bad, they asked me and I said, I would bring it up, he said, he's not saying that kids gonna get nine dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
And he can't get
Yes, ma'am. So hopefully we'll get some help on this and be able to proceed. All right, any other items, uh Councilwoman Thomas, is that all your items?
Uh yes.
Okay, great, all right, um update on business items for paper consent. Really, it's not very much, I'm pleased to say most items were taken care of, I know that I'm sure there uh has a lot of projects this is too responsible for, but we hope to get something uh regarding city check uh in writing uh very soon so that all of us can see what our dates complications are. Uh Revenue Committee meeting, we are going to reschedule that on Tuesday, we'll announce that date. Uh and Ms. uh Ms. Ellison, can you make sure we have on that agenda, Mr. Brooks uh at the Revenue Committee to present? We have him presented, so can you please add that uh if it's not already on the uh the agenda? Uh we will be at a Revenue Committee meeting and I'm going to also ask at that committee that Councilman Carmichael uh present uh a possible suggestion. He has, okay, so um revenue recommendation. And so can you place on that agenda, Councilman Carmichael, Revenue Recommendation? We know the members of the committee are yours truly, Councilman Reddaw and Councilman Carmichael. We had, I'm gonna say it on Tuesday, I'm gonna And so we are gonna have that. Um also, uh on Tuesday, I will be giving a report concerning uh our training we went to on last week at the Alabama Municipal Ball, which was an outstanding session. And so I will be providing a report uh to citizens from that. Uh since we're the review board, we're going to announce that new meeting date on Tuesday as well, we are gonna announce that today. Uh Dr. Manon, on the end day, I will be uh making comments about that on Tuesday as well, as it was a huge success. Uh make a comment about that. Uh taking care of discretionary account balances uh and for uh the court, municipal court appointments. We will be having the interviews for the judges and the defense attorneys on Monday uh here in the chambers and our council secretary will make sure that uh the council chambers is reserved for council business. Uh as we will have uh the interviews starting Monday at three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
And those interviews will be conducted by the Public Safety Committee, which includes Councilwoman Christie Thomas, Councilwoman Janet Thomas and myself, out of all council meetings, trying my into a team. We'll have those interviews and then we will vote on the appointments on Tuesday. And so we'll do that on Monday and then vote on Tuesday. That's for the court appointments and we have not Councilwoman Thomas yet. Uh we will need to get some direction, some clear direction on the prosecutor position. We've heard conflicting things statements, so I'm saying it's a council appointment, so I'm saying it's a mayor appointment, we need to get clear direction. And if it is the council's appointment, then we will uh follow the procedure and fill those.
Because we we, you know, we 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 did Vanessa Perkins the last term. She was prosecutor from that county, the year before. So that's why I tell you that, there's no conflict or interest on none of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh
Yes, ma'am, well, we will uh, we will make sure before we do it, so that's Yes, ma'am, well, we will, uh, we will make sure before we do it, so that's the Public Safety Committee. Uh, now, also on the agenda, we have the MJ ninety-three foundation vendor fee waiver. You remember Ms. Thomas C. Johnson came for us, so we'll be voting on that fee waiver for that, uh, that final, the secret rule on Tuesday, we'll vote on that. And also I looked at Councilwoman Benjamin's, uh, recommendations included a one thousand dollar, as we did last year, uh, donation, uh, to, uh, the Jazz on the Grass. And so we'll be passing around the discretionary form, as we did last year, for people, for council members to place their contribution. And we'll approve that on the consumptive. So, uh, if you, uh, on Tuesday, when you get here, that form will be available for you. Uh, and you can fill out this, we can vote on it, on Tuesday, for Jazz on the Grass. And the second recommendation coming from Councilwoman Benjamin did involve the waiver of the vendor fee. Uh, and, uh, if the resolution as presented to us by our attorney, that is inclusive of that recommendation. So a affirmative vote of that resolution will take care of that resolution, that recommendation as well. So that will be presented, uh, for the body, uh, to approve as well on Tuesday. Uh, I hope that's all the items that I, Councilwoman agreed to.
I did, um, forgot about it. Uh, I'll go get it back. This, um, began on May twenty-third, um, Councilwoman Secretary, that shirt, outreach ministry, there's sunscreen, um, love our kids, personal care package, one of the Sophie Keaton's elementary school. And what they're doing, they're doing this for every school, but Sophie Keaton is the first school that they're doing. And some of the personal items that are required, um, are E.O.R. so, to pay, to brush, sock, um, washcloth, sanitary items for girls, and washing detergent, and that delivery date, May twentieth, and I imagine it's gonna be effective, this year, that's true. Just not take information for that, it's three three four, four three zero, zero two six one, and that's going to get the beat up out of it. But she's gonna be doing every school, um, and I think we'll just be bringing back announcements for that.
But they won't do it with, they did not, and right.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so they want to think to do.
All right, council, are there any committees that want to report anything to the council?
Jerry Wood, they're right here.
With that said, there being no further business of the Southern City Council, this work session is hereby stand adjourned.
Come on, you have to get that picture. My picture. Bet they'll be good and great, they'll be sweet, they're, I'm proud of me, and like, they're, they're.
Where?
Well, you know, it, it's, it's.
You know, I'm not. I have.
Okay, who will? Okay, I promise you. This thing will be all right. You guys.
Appreciate it, I appreciate you, I appreciate you.
I know, you know what the deal.
I do know the deal.
We look, you, you check it out here.
I, I know the deal.
Okay, well, I.
Whatever the deal you're talking about, I know.
You know what I'm talking about.
I'm talking to you, I'm talking.
I'm glad that, that what, that what we had about his, his situation.
You take.
I take it, and I told you. Yes.
That's what you need.
Huh? But you both, you told the notes down.
Yeah, but that tape.
Yeah, I, I record.
Thank you.
I know, but you gotta take deals, man, ain't nobody living like that. You write our letter. We got us for real. Hey, what you gonna, what you gonna break up in years of life? Who didn't get away from? They so. The people that changed, that saved the world.
I was at work.
Every time with your meat, they would do it like, they get it like, it's. They beat you like, you don't know what I got. And they hate like, it is. Down there, you rock it down.
I watch.
I'm having my y'all, man, talking to you. Hey, I hear you. I'm praying, talking to you.
I don't know.
Cause of that, you.
I'm better than I'm just, I'm on trial.
You was in traffic, right? You was in traffic, right?
Oh, well, I left like seven. And then you break out. You tried to break out, you didn't have a trial. I got it.
It's gonna be a worse part. What time you get that? Just keep that one of them, see? She said, look, yeah, this makes you grab them, to say, to jail. It'll be the worst. So we just, yeah, I'm afraid, which may. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. The money that you're spending, I already. And they all. This is not how it's right. There's a truth with my business, and they're never making, I'm gonna do it. They're making, they're making, they're making, they're making, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. I'm gonna, I'm gonna. I'm gonna be there, good. I don't know. The time is right. That's when we call the. We don't have a decision. You been, he, 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 he. Oh, who was the other man? Now, two, one eight, a match, you're my, my, my.
You don't let you have it, you just, I, I, I. You know, I'm.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm. You let it go, oh, man.
Three.